Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, September 14th. All of our council is here today. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for this Monday, September 18th meeting. So council, please take a look at that. Do -- Mr. Butler, do we know that -- is there anything on that agenda that staff would like to give us any presentations on?
No, Mayor, but we stand ready if there's any questions.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding Monday's agenda? I will apologize in advance to the Vice Mayor. I'm gone. I leave town Monday morning going to Korea, and I'll be back Friday night. The governor is opening a new trade office in Taiwan and in South Korea next week, and I'm honored to be part of the South Korean part of that. Some of you know I'm kind of a Koreophile. That's where I served my mission for my church many, many years ago. And so that'll be a -- it's my first opportunity to go back, but more important, it's not really a personal trip. We're going to have the opportunity to meet with some great companies, Samsung and LG and Hyundai, that are all, you know, we're competing for those companies to come and invest more in Mesa, Arizona.
Airport they can use.
I'm sorry?
I got an airport they can use.
We do have an airport they can use. Also, I appreciate the efforts of the Arizona Korean Association. They've been pursuing a sister city for our community there. Wijangbu is a wonderful city that's just north of Seoul. It's the home -- for those of you who are my age, you remember the show MASH. That's where MASH happened. But that's grown into, again, a small city in Korea is a few million people. And so that we are -- I'll have the opportunity to meet with the folks in Wijangbu and hopefully come to terms on, well, to just solidify a relationship that'll be ongoing, and I think will be a successful one, given the size and the strength of the Arizona Korean community in Mesa. So, I'm sorry, that was a long story, but I appreciate. So I will be gone both Monday night and Thursday morning for a few days while I'm out of the country. So the Vice Mayor will conduct those meetings. And again, last chance, anything on Monday's agenda that you'd like any additional information on? All right, then, moving on. Item 2A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and to receive an update on Mesa's fiber initiative. Ian, thank you for making Mesa a place that has been talked about across the country on, when it comes to fiber and getting fiber in our streets.
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Ian Linsen. I'm an assistant to the city manager, and as the mayor alluded to, I'm here to give an update on our fiber initiative. Believe it or not, it's been about a year since this all started, and just about a year since many of the new companies have been doing construction. Many of you have experienced that firsthand. You're well aware of what's been going on, and there is a lot of great stuff. And so we just wanted to kind of share with you all the good news that's happening and what to really expect coming forward over the next year. So just quick recap, we -- the council had a goal for many, many years, really, to increase connectivity throughout Mesa. So Mesa has traditionally had really strong internet connectivity, had some great ISP partners, but council realized, especially during the COVID pandemic, that we could always do a little bit more. There were some issues, and we said, hey, let's be, let's not just have good connectivity, let's have the best connectivity. And so we embarked upon this fiber initiative. The goal was to bring more fiber optic internet, specifically fiber optic internet options to Mesa. And we wanted to pass every residential premise. So that means that every home in Mesa, every residential unit in Mesa should have the option to connect to fiber optic internet at some point. And so, as a reminder, and for those of you who were not there, last summer, council approved five new fiber licenses, which is really amazing, because I'm not, I'm still not aware of any other community that has had that many new providers come into town at one time. So, over the year, I mentioned it has been busy. We have five providers actively installing. Now, that's not the same five providers that I just mentioned. That includes two of our incumbents. They have continued to do work throughout the city, continue to expand their networks, continue to upgrade their networks, which is great. And then we have three of the new licensees who are actively doing work in Mesa. The vast majority of that new work, as many of you know, is occurring here around this part of town in West Mesa. It happens to be that there is a fantastic connection to the internet in this part of town. There's a data center nearby that these guys were able to connect right to and get going with. They didn't have to stand up that infrastructure initially. It also just happens to be great that this is, tends to be the densest part of town, some of the areas with the most need for additional connectivity. So it's kind, it's worked out very well in our favor that this, that we've been seeing these builds happen in this part of town. But as I mentioned, the incumbents, you know, they've had networks throughout Mesa for a long time, so they are upgrading throughout Mesa. So in Councilmember Summers' neck of the woods, there have been some upgrades from the incumbents and all over. So if you look at a map of Mesa, there's a lot of lights popping up as to where some of these builds are happening. And then the other thing, one of the big topics of conversation as we brought these folks on was how they were actually going to do their builds. What was the, what were the construction methodologies that they were going to undertake to do this? And there was, the Mesa Council is actually a leader here in authorizing and allowing these providers to use something called microtrenching. So we've got, we've got that underway. There's a couple pictures there that kind of show the little, very narrow trench that microtrenching uses. So that is being deployed in the field, but also the traditional methodology of boring is being used as well. So you're seeing a variety of techniques throughout the city. And as you can imagine, I can't say this enough, our rights-of-way have been incredibly busy. In fact, we've really been seeing unprecedented activity this past year. You know, we're always very, very busy, but think about everything that is going on and then add all of this. And this has involved so many people and so many departments throughout our city that have stepped up and taken this on in a way that has just really been unbelievable. So, you know, I wanted, I didn't actually map this, and I really should have, but we've had nearly 1,000 miles of conduit permitted. So tell, somebody tell me how far that could get across the United States. That's a huge amount of conduit that has been permitted. Not all of it has been under construction, but a good amount of it has. That is just a wild amount of work that's occurring. We've had a lot of traffic, you know, from transportation, they've been involved. Our utility department has been incredibly involved, because they are electric utility, in fact. They do the locates for all of our utilities. So they have to go out and locate city of Mesa facilities where these builds are happening. I mean, 3,600 locate requests, crazy amount of work. And, but the exciting news is, since these guys are going so quickly, there's so much work happening, our folks are doing so much, we've had nearly 30,000 residential, residential homes or units already passed. That doesn't mean that they necessarily have service, and I could go into this a little bit more, but just, you know, there's a lot that goes into it beyond just laying the fiber. They actually have to test it, they validate it, you know, a resident has to sign up. But anyway, 30, nearly 30,000 homes have already been passed. And these companies are all, the new ones, are all still in the early stages of their builds. This is just getting started. So, as you can imagine, this is all happening mainly in our neighborhoods, and many of you are on the receiving end of that neighborhood engagement. You hear from residents as this is coming to town, both positive and negative. We have had, I can tell you, overwhelming positive reaction to this initiative. Folks are excited for additional options. They like to have choice. You know, many would probably stay with their current provider, but many are just excited about having the choice. But I wanted to kind of walk through a little bit of what the providers are supposed to do for notifying residents, what we kind of have done on the engagement side. So all of, anybody who's installing these facilities, and again, just talking specifically fiber now, but this is true of other work, that they are required to notify every resident who's going to be experiencing work in front of their home. And so that normally comes in the form of a door hanger. Sometimes it can be a mailer, but more often than not, in this case, it's some door hangers. There'll also be large street signs. You've probably seen our standard street signs that you've seen, the green signs that are around even this building. And that's to alert folks that work is going to be occurring in that area. It will also have, the door hangers will have contact information for all of the companies, which is vital, because we've told the companies, hey, you guys are doing the work, you are the first point of contact. Expect folks to contact you if they've got questions, because you are the ones, you know, in front of their homes doing the work. We've also, though, from the city side, initially when this, when this started back a year ago, we put out some social media information about it, saying, you know, basically sharing the exciting news, but saying this is coming and be ready for it. We've all, we also have a webpage. It's our high-speed internet in Mesa webpage. It has some information about these builds. We're actually in the process right now of updating that. We've learned a lot. I mean, I should have really started with that. We've learned a lot through this whole process, as you can imagine. And we've learned that there's probably more we can do on the notification side as well. So we want to make sure we've got the most relevant, up-to-date information. We're doing that on our website. So some of the things they can expect once they get this notification is that there are temporary restrictions. That could be parking, that could be lane restrictions. And as anybody knows who has that in front of their house, yeah, it can be a little bit frustrating, but they are temporary. And so that's supposed to be removed and cleared within a couple of days after the work is done. In some cases, folks' yards will, you know, have the work going through them, but it's technically part of the rights-of-way. It's something called a public utility easement. So this is new for most folks, because most utilities come in when the home is being built, usually not after. So most of, I happen to have a bunch of utility boxes in my front yard, but that all happened before I moved in. So it's a new thing to see a utility come in through where they're allowed to, through the public utility easement and put some facilities. But when those yards are worked on, when they are disturbed, they are required to be restored back to what they look like. And I know at least one or two of you have experienced that firsthand. And so that is, we are, we are very strict on that and say we need to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods. They need to look as good as they did before you got here. And as I mentioned, the neighbors, neighbors are definitely encouraged to contact the providers first and foremost, but by now, they probably have most of our numbers in the city, and they also contact us, and they're more, you know, more than happy to do that and to talk to them. So let's get to the results. So new services are, in fact, live. So while I mentioned the tens of thousands of homes that have been passed, there's a fraction of those that are actually live. They have these new services. And this is, to me, this is really amazing. So prior to this whole initiative, the top speeds that you could find in Mesa were up to 1 gigabit per second download, not to mention the very slow upload speeds. And that, but that was good. You know, that is, that is a good speed. Today, it is eight times faster. You are literally, you literally have access in Mesa, Arizona, to the fastest internet in the United States, if not places in the world. Now, Korea may be an exception, but we have some of the, we literally have some of the fastest internet speeds in the United States. The other amazing, and that is just going to have the ability to continue. It will only get faster from here, and it doesn't require new construction to enable faster speeds. I have heard rumors already of 25-gig products. Now, that won't be available necessarily anytime soon, but it is on the horizon. It's amazing. The other, the other thing that is happening, which is really cool, because this, you know, was something we expected, is there has been increased price competition. So not only are you seeing faster speeds, you're seeing lower prices. And anecdotally, and in patches across the city, we are seeing current pricing coming down. So you are, even without having some of the new service available, you have residents in Mesa that are experiencing some price relief on their current bills. So that's fantastic. And I thought it would be great to mention, I mean, we get cold calls out of the blue from folks that are like, what is happening in Mesa? I had a research firm that kind of specializes in tracking internet connectivity say, hey, we heard about Mesa. What are you guys doing? How is this working? There's some folks wanting to do case studies on us. I mean, you guys, this is making news. And it's, it's having a ripple effect, especially in our region. Many of our neighboring cities are starting to enter into license agreements of their own, but other communities across the country are paying attention and seeing how this is all working out. So what comes next? Over the next year, I mean, I anticipate I'll, you know, we'll probably be back next year to, if not before, to give you another update. But we are continuing to do the coordination with these installers, with our neighbors. We're continuing to learn. It's an iterative process. We're continuing to get better and better. I don't think we're going backwards. I think we're going forwards. We will see continued builds here in the West, so densification of what's been happening for sure. But also, we're going to start seeing them now, start moving further east. It may not be uniformly marching along. You may actually see some rabbit hopping, or some jumping around, but we will start to see some more, some more builds east. So, so other districts are going to start to see, experience the fun of what's been, what's happening here in West Mesa. And then, and all of these companies, and this is a point I really want to stress, are very interested in ramping up their already lightning-fast builds. They want to increase this multiple times. And the issue with that, as you can imagine, is, you know, there's a workforce issue. There's a workforce issue with the fiber companies themselves. They got to work through that. There's a workforce issue on our side. We are at capacity. Our guys are running, you know, 100%, and they're doing it incredibly well. But this is, this is one of the conversations that we are actively having right now to see, because we want them to continue to build, and we want it to be done quickly. We want it to be done well, but yet the sooner the better. So we're having those conversations right now with these companies. So expect to see more, more, more great work in the year to come. And I think that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ian.
Mayor, I'll just, I'll just add though, real quick, before council jumps in, that, you know, really appreciate all the hard work that Ian has put into this over the past year, but this has been such a team effort throughout the organization. Really appreciate Beth Hunning and Lori Greco and engineering, all of our utilities that have to deal with this. This is a major lift, and we knew coming into this, it would be a bit of controlled chaos. And it has been, in a good way, because the direction that council laid out is really come to fruition, where we are unleashing billions of dollars of private investment in Mesa through this public-private partnership, where we want to be facilitators. We want to help them turn dirt and get their infrastructure in the ground, and it's something that we, as a, as a city government, aren't having to pay for. The private sector is. But our benefit, our residents are benefiting. Not only, as Ian said, are we seeing some of the fastest internet speeds in the country, but the price point is the big difference. Now, to get that premium speed, it's almost half of what it was before this program started. And then when you couple in what all of these companies are doing to help our folks, our lowest-income residents and others come up with ways, both through federal funding and otherwise, to get connectivity, I think we're in a situation now, because of that competition, which frankly didn't exist to, obviously to the extent that it does now. I mean, we're seeing the market work in that regard, and we're seeing that competition get more access to our residents, no matter what their financial situation is. And so we really appreciate council. We know there's going to be frustrating moments for some of our residents, and we're doing everything we can to try to, try to mitigate that as best, as best we can. And Ian and Lori and others are on the phone every day with our partners in the telecom side, trying to make sure that if residents are upset, we're addressing those issues and getting that taken care of. So we really appreciate the support of council, because this is extremely disruptive, right? This is a citywide build. It's touching every district, every, you know, every neighborhood at some point will be touched. So we really appreciate your support and patience and feedback that we'll get. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to questions.
Thank you very much. Let's begin with Councilmember Spillsbury.
Hi, thank you so much. I know you've done so much work on this. This is so exciting. And I just think back to when I first got on council, and the mayor was talking about how he wanted his dream of bringing fiber to the whole city, and we were all like, yeah, that's never going to happen, because that's really expensive. And, and it's just so cool to see that, like, we've made it happen. You've made it happen. Like, this is, this is amazing, and without a cost, like you said, to, to the city and to the residents. So a couple of questions I have. I guess I'm, I'm realizing that I don't know exactly what our city staff has to do to make this happen. So are they doing digging? Are they doing street work? Are they, I mean, you talked about the connections and stuff, but...
So Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, first of all, thanks so much for the comments and the kind words. I mean, it's not me. It's Lori Greco. It's Beth Hunning. It's our folks in transportation. I mean, they are, it is, it is amazing how they have stepped up. But, but thank you, thank you very much, and it's enabled all of this. So that is a great question, something I probably should have clarified. To Scott's point, it's a private sector, this is a private sector initiative first and foremost. So all of the building, all of the ownership, all of the operation, private sector, we are not involved with that. So none of our crews, none of our contractors are doing any of that work. The work that our folks are doing is on the permitting side, the inspection side, as I mentioned, the locating, making sure that they can safely dig, so they're not hitting our stuff as little, or as little as possible. And that, and that sort of thing. And that is a, you know, it is a monumental task unto itself, but none of the construction, none of the operation is city-oriented.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that in my mind of like, what we were actually doing with our employees or whatever to make this happen. And then, is there any kind of projected date of how long it would take to get through the whole city?
Well, so Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, you know, that's an interesting question, because it, like I said, they want to go, they want to go faster. And at some, at some point, you know, you can only go so fast with what you have. So there are, there are a variety of projections out there. So I hesitate to throw a date out only because so many different factors. But, you know, when we looked at this initiative, I know personally, and in conversations with other folks, if you, if we were to say six years for a full build-out, that, that was fast, and that was good. And we were hearing that that could be, that could happen. But there's a lot that can change that to make that go longer. There are some things that can change that to actually accelerate that timeframe. But I don't want, you know, I don't want to set expectations that we're going to get done in three years, because that's not going to happen, even though some people might want that to happen. So if we, if we have in our mind even another five, five or six years, I would, I would consider that a huge, huge success. Again, thinking about how you now have decades of opportunity that comes out of those five or six years, where you don't have to go back in.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing that, that we can keep increasing the technology without having to go back into the street. I mean, that in itself is kind of amazing. So, and maybe this is a loaded question. What did Mesa do specifically that's made this work? Why, I mean, wouldn't every city want to do this? So what has Mesa done specifically?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, I mean, that's a softball question. That actually, it goes to your enthusiasm, frankly, truly, for getting additional connectivity to Mesa. The fact, when we were talking with folks, they would allude to the fact that the, the elected leadership wanted to see this happen. They want to come into an environment where they know they have partners with the elected leadership, and then that went on down through the organization. So that was, that was a huge selling point, first and foremost. We went out and we said, you know, we're interested, please. And we said, come to us, tell us how we could do this. But we also were incredibly innovative in, as I mentioned, our construction, allowing for different construction methodologies. That has been a big sticking point in some of our neighboring communities. It's prevented some of this from happening. But then also, also in, you know, we need to recoup our costs for managing the right-of-way, and how we structured that was really innovative as well. It made us whole, made sure that the city was well taken care of, but it also created a new paradigm that these, these providers felt comfortable with as well. So all of those things really in combo helped. It also just helps, I think there's a little bit of luck in that the market was right for additional expansion, and we just kind of caught them, you know, right at the right time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Think, as you mentioned, Ian, the, a lot of the work has happened in West and downtown Mesa. And I think at the beginning, there is a lot of hiccups and just the communication and efforts from the companies, and maybe ours wasn't the greatest. I think it's gotten a lot better. As I, you know, in my neighborhood, we've had one of the older providers do some of the work, and now a new provider coming in. And we do have some of that stacking that sometimes that work extends out to multiple weeks in a neighborhood. And so I feel like we could do a lot better job maybe on signage, because sometimes these companies put signs maybe in one of the entry points to the neighborhoods, not the multiple levels. And so, per my experience, like, usually they cone off various different streets in the neighborhood. And so looking at those options that we, we can have a better communicating that work, and making sure we're on top of the companies that are leaving door hangers, that they leave them before, because I know they still, it's a different layering process maybe to, with the various vendors that are happening. So I know we've gotten some, some of those calls and emails about what's going on, because even though you mentioned, you know, this is not Mesa doing the work, I think they, they see Mesa, the city, as, you know, allowing this, or it is Mesa people out there, right?
Yeah.
When it's not, but...
Yeah. So Mayor and Vice Mayor, I thank you for the question. And I think you touched on what, in my mind, is one of the biggest things that we can continue to work on and prove upon, which is the communication aspect of this. I think, and that'll, in my mind, it is a twofold process of improvement. So both with the companies themselves, which again, we do a lot, but to your, to your point, requiring them to do some additional things, I think may make sense. We don't want to be overly, this whole time, we have taken approach of not being overly burdensome by any means, but ensuring that, again, our neighborhoods are well-informed, they're well taken care of, that sort of thing. So I, so there's going to be some improvement, we hope to see from those companies. But I do think that internally, we have started to talk about this. What else can maybe the city do? Another, another big push for sure, I think, especially since we, I mean, we're at this point, but since this is going to be a multi-year process, have something ready to, you know, as this starts to move, to make those neighborhoods a little bit more aware, you know, what that looks like. I think we'd be happy, you know, we'll come back to Scott and to Chris and to chat with them about. But I envision signage, I envision, you know, social media, regular media, maybe Channel 11 spots, that sort of thing, and enhancement of our website. So would love to talk more about all of that, but I think that will be a big priority for us in the coming months.
Yeah, I think once you explain to people what's happening, people are overwhelmingly , yeah, I want faster, faster speeds and welcome, you know, lower pricing for internet in the future. So I think once you explain to folks what's happening, that folks are welcoming and understand that this is needed based on just their experience in, in this kind of realm of internet service, right? So I think that's a positive piece that we can talk about, especially, I think people don't realize the right-of-way in their yards sometimes. And so that is a question, like, why are they digging up my yards, kind of thing, that we've gotten quite a bit in, in just maybe explaining, like, explainer videos and just what's going on, that we can, we can promote a little bit more on our side of what's kind of the process of that piece.
Yeah. Yeah. So Mayor and Vice Mayor, I love that, and I think that's something that we can, we can definitely put together.
The question, I had a question on multifamily. What's the, what's the work on multifamily service or...
Well, so, and maybe somebody else knows this better than me, but Mayor and Vice Mayor, I believe there is, so traditionally, there used to be a situation where a multifamily complex could have exclusive rights with a single provider, and that provider would be the only one able to go into units. That has changed. The FCC has made some changes. And so now, so that's nationally. It worked out very well in our circumstances, since we're having all these builds happen. So multifamily units are being passed, just like a residential home would be. And then it is up to that multifamily owner to bring in whatever service it is that they want to bring in then to their units. So when I, you know, when I mentioned the, the tens of 20-some thousand residential units that have been passed, that does include some multifamily properties.
No problem.
Right now, but again, I don't think I'm mistaken here, but I could be, it's not up to the individual renter to be able to, the multifamily complex owner has to bring that service on property first.
But it will be available if they want.
Absolutely, yes. In fact, that, again, was our, one of our main priorities was, in the multifamily areas, some of those folks had the least amount of options, least amount of access. And so we really wanted to focus on those. And again, it's fortunate that they're here, and that's what the data center was in this part of town.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say commend the staff, engineering, and even streets, right? Because we, initially, we had issues with the streets being overlaid in some areas and, and having conversations on how we, time, you know, the timelines of how, when we do that work. And so really commend staff on all the work that we've been doing. So thank you, Ian.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you. Other comments?
I do have a few questions. So I just want to understand a little bit more about the process. Oh, they come in and they do their boring or trenching through the yards. We see that and then we see the micro trenching. Micro trenching is really awesome. Well, I wouldn't, more companies do that. You would think it's a quick process, a couple hours, you know, you can be done versus multiple days. And also when they dig up, is it, are they laying a conduit in which multiple providers can be in that or each provider's going to dig up?
So Mayor and Councilmember Duff, you got great questions. I'll take that second one first. So right now, each provider that is installing their own network. However, there's, there's some nuance to that because one provider in particular right now, Ubiquity, which happens to be in the Vice Mayor's district first and foremost, but is actually going to be coming to your district soon, is what's called an open access provider. So it's still their network, they own it, they, they construct it, but they rent it out to various internet service providers or folks that will use that fiber. So they provide the dark fiber, they light it for a tenant. I always, I use the analogy of like a mall, there's a mall owner that rents out their shops to different tenants. That's essentially what Ubiquity is doing with their open access network. So while, you know, multiple providers can go on it, they don't, those additional tenants don't own that network, they're renting it. Another company is doing kind of a hybrid approach where they, there will be some exclusivity for, for themselves first and foremost, but then they intend to open that up again in a quasi-open access model as well. I shouldn't even say quasi, it's that I think they intend to do open access. And then there are providers that are doing just fiber for them. So it'll only be their company that uses it. But so, so basically the answer is yes, you know, it's, it's a mashup, kind of a volley above. But, you know, maybe where you're going with this is, you know, because we have had conversations about this, you know, does, since we've got three new providers, can't they all just share the same network? So you only have one build. Well, none of them really want to do that because, you know, from a business standpoint, they no longer have full control over the asset, doesn't meet their business model, that sort of thing. And so I, I ended with that because when you talk about business models and the different varieties of construction techniques, that tends to be what's driving that right now. And yes, you would think potentially micro trenching might be the way to go, but for certain companies, that's just not, one, what they're familiar with. They, they are ready to go with the traditional methodology, they're more comfortable with that perhaps, and it works for their business model. I, I can tell you, we've, we've absolutely talked with the companies and said, hey, by the way, micro trenching is available to you, you know, Lori put together some amazing standards and feel free. But it's ultimately up to them to choose.
So depending on their business model, so it's possible if you had two traditionally installed providers, they would be boring up your yard twice?
So, so Mayor and Councilmember, possibly. And I don't, I don't want to be like, say I've had crystal ball, but the, so the three new providers right now, of the three new, two of them are doing micro trenching, one is doing boring. I, and again, I'm, you know, this has come back to haunt me, but I don't foresee a situation where you have two providers boring through yards anytime soon.
Good, 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 good. So if you've suffered through it, then maybe it's over.
Yes, yes. Now, just to, again, to caveat, so you may have, you may have suffered through the yard work, but then you may see, and this is what Vice Mayor was saying, you may see then a micro trencher coming through, but it's going to be less intrusive.
Yeah, absolutely. And a lot of people have been talking about this, we are making some news, there are some questions about digital equity. Can you explain some of the programs that are out there among the providers for low-income households?
Yeah, so Mayor and Councilmember, great question. That was another, although it wasn't a requirement that we put out there for this particular initiative, for the fiber initiative, to, to absolutely have digital equity program. We said, you should absolutely have digital equity programs, right when we talked to them. And so they all are, and man, now it is escaping me, the term, maybe Scott will remember the term for the, there is a subsidy that the federal government has put out through the American Rescue Plan and, and those initiatives that has allowed up to $30 a month that is covered for a certain speed. And all of the providers are part of that initiative. So the great news is that anybody who wants internet should be able to get internet at next to no cost. Now, the problem though, is on the, the communication side, the awareness side. That has been a big issue, as you know, for everything that we do, but for this in particular, still, most people do not know that that's an option to them. So the companies though I have seen, and we have talked with them about, making sure they advertise that. The other things that they are starting to do, you may be experiencing this already, they are becoming active members of our community. And, and this is, you know, on top of what our incumbents already do. But they are, they are partnering with different organizations that do, you know, digital inclusivity, that build those types of skills, and they want to be, they want to do that. I've had several, I actually just had a conversation with a provider yesterday who wants to do more of that. And so I feel really good about what I'm seeing on the digital equity side, but the thing I keep saying on a number of these issues is while we haven't required them, we're going to continue to watch them. And if we're seeing that they kind of go in the wrong direction, well, we'll have some, you know, some stronger conversations with them about it.
And so those subsidies from the federal government, ARBA dollars?
Yes.
They run out next year or 26 or 24, 26? I don't know.
Yeah, it is 25 or 26, it's coming up.
Okay, all right, so we have a little while.
There, there were, Mayor and Councilmember Duff, there, there were some subsidies that were part of COVID response, but then there were also subsidies that I think were baked into the bipartisan infrastructure law bill that, that extends a little bit further. I'm looking at Abigail, her head nod here too. But we, we can, we can follow up on the timing of that. I think it's a multi-year horizon for, for that subsidy.
So yes, so it absolutely is multi-year, it still has an end date unfortunately. However, I can tell you, and Abigail can tell you better though, but our delegation is actively lobbying to extend that. And many, many organizations are, because obviously that is a huge, huge deal that allows folks to access the internet if, if they want it and they were unable to afford it otherwise.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm sure a lot of households are like, oh yeah, sure, it's free or no cost, yeah, and sign it, whatever, here, everything is free upfront and then you pay for it in the end. But if we knew like, there was a term on that, so if they did sign a contract for one year, two years at least, they would be able to have a subsidy during that contract period.
Yes, well, and, and Mayor and Councilmember, I, you know, if there are any providers watching right now, they're probably screaming at the screen because they all have, independent of the federal government subsidy, they all have special programs and offerings for folks that need assistance. And I mean, Cox has been a champion in that area for many, many years. They've actually stepped up the speeds that they provide to those folks. Those I don't see going away anytime soon. It's just the federal subsidy that helps cover even that cost because those programs, sometimes, you know, you'll see them 10 bucks a month, 15 bucks a month, you know, that's still a cost obviously. So the federal subsidy covers that cost. But if the subsidy were to go away ultimately, which we hope it doesn't, you would still have those underlying programs available. And again, the new providers are all offering services like that as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments?
Please, thank you. You know, as I listened to you, Ian, you're just a walking billboard for digital media and fiber, you know? Your, your passion is unbelievable and I, I don't know why they haven't just reached out and tried to hire you, but that's not going to happen.
Hey, 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 take it easy.
I don't want, we don't want to lose you.
I'm a Mesa guy, yeah.
Move the strike.
Yeah. But the minimal construction issues in, in District One, you know, we've reached out and what I really like is the construction team resolves them quickly through your office and then Lori and, and I guess that's in engineering as well. So I think for residents to know that there is a contact for resolution, because some of them, you know, I had some neighborhoods reach out, well, I have a cracked pipe and leaking irrigation water and et cetera, and it wasn't resolved for like three weeks. And I, I don't think that was quite common for the construction individuals. So, I mean, expand on, on maybe some of the resolutions and how residents can get, fix their problems.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, thank you because that, as I said, that, that is, I, I have like a tier of issues that we've been seeing and that's on the top of that list, right? Especially the restoration part and what they can do about it. So as I kind of mentioned, you know, the residents are supposed to have gotten, received contact information for the companies. Those companies, for the most part, now remember, again, we are passing tens of thousands of homes, tens of thousands of people, so you can expect there are going to be some issues sometimes. So like the three week thing, it should be an outlier. For the most part, you know, we are not seeing that, but when that happens, they should know who they can contact to resolve that. So in a perfect world, they would have received the information from the company, they'd be able to call that company, the company would be like, whoops, you know, somehow it messed up, we'll resolve it and then get it resolved within the next couple of days. When that doesn't happen, which has been the case a couple of times, they kind of look around for an alternative source, they tend to contact you, they'll contact us. So that's one of the things when we, when I was mentioning kind of an enhanced communication plan, one of the things I do see, especially on our website and something like that, is a, is a city contact as well. We, we will, and I will be sure to do this because otherwise it's going to come back to bite me, is say, contact the companies first, you know, in big bold letters, but then if that doesn't work, here's, here's the other contact that you can go to to get a resolution. You know, we, we kind of have a standard that we want those issues taken resolved and I'm just going to say it, in a week. We'd love that, you know, that's kind of where we're at for now. Now, maybe there's a little bit more flexibility that can come from that if these companies are doing a lot of work, but as long as the resident is assured, if they have a contact that they can reach out to, they can be assured of the timeframe by which the restoration is going to occur, that's really what we want to see. All that being said, we don't want it to be six weeks, we don't want it to be two months. It's got to be done relatively quickly. So I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. You know, I'm excited about just the collaboration and the work with not only contractors, but also our departments in the city, because it has to be seamless to help move this process along. You know, and I'm thinking about, you know, technology in the future, we're going to be well-prepared, you know, a good foundation for whatever happens by having the fiber in our communities and our higher dense areas and then moved out, you know, to other areas in the city. So, you know, I'm excited about that and the expansion for our city because it puts us far and above beyond other municipalities, so.
Mayor and Councilmember, you and me both, I think it's really exciting.
Okay, thank you. And I expect to see a digital Ian billboard somewhere.
Having kind of Max Headroom flashbacks here.
There you go.
Council, other comments? If not, I'll, I'll just echo, everything's been said. All eyes are on Mesa right now in this, in the industry and I, it is, there is going to be some growing pains here, we're, we're aware of that. I've talked with the heads of these companies and they've acknowledged that they're, we're all building this plane while we're flying it and, and, but they're committed to the same goal we have, which is to get that, that hair of fiber into our homes and businesses. And if we do that, we'll be future-proof for, for decades to come. So it's a, it's a worthy goal and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it. And I just, I just want to recommit to the industry that the City of Mesa is grateful for them choosing us to, to do this and, and we're going to, we're committed to providing the staffing and, and being innovative when it comes to permitting and things so that we can continue to, to strive for this goal that I think every community in the country is going to want to, want to find a way to do this. So thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item two B is a presentation and to receive an update on Mesa's water portfolio and our water forecast. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Chris Hasser, Water Resources Director, and I'm here today with Jesse Haywood, who's Assistant Water Resources Director. We're here to talk to you about a few different things today in the, in the water field. Most notably, we're going to talk about our water portfolio and how it stacks up against demand, both past demand, current demand, and future demand. So let's move ahead. I think the best way to start with any discussion like this is a map, and this is a map we've shown you before. It breaks the city down into three major zones, the city zone, the eastern zone, and the southern zone. And each of these zones are served by different treatment facilities. The city zone, which we're sitting in here today, that's on project and that's served by the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which is managed by City of Phoenix, but we co-own that with the City of Phoenix. That's the largest water treatment plant in the state. The eastern zone is served by the Brown Road Water Treatment Facility and the southern zone is the Signal Butte Water Treatment Facility. And I should point out that groundwater pumping can be applied to all three of these zones per our 100-year assured water supply. And groundwater pumping, I should also note that in the assured water supply can go up to about 12% of the water we serve today to our customers, but we try to keep that below 10, try to stay in single digits between 5 and 10%. And that's, that's our goal. So we're going to get into this a little further. I want, want to point out, but we're not going to talk as much about the city zone because it's a little more straightforward, it's less complicated because it's, it's on project water, right? So this is water that originates here in Arizona on the salt and the Verde watersheds. It's stored in the reservoirs locally in Arizona and then it's delivered to us through SRP since they manage that system. So it's really one water source other than groundwater. This goes back a century when that, this part of the area was mostly agriculture and the water use was a little different back then. So now we're more of an urban setting, although there's some agriculture. An urban setting generally uses a lot less water, so we have a pretty good buffer. We have about 60,000 acre foot of on-project water through the Salt River System, Salt River Project System, but our demand is typically under 40,000. So you can see we have a pretty significant buffer. So it's straightforward, there's a little less to talk about. So we're going to focus in a few minutes here on some slides that really drill down into the eastern zone and the southern zone. So this is area or part of town that relies exclusively on Colorado River water as well as groundwater, and then there's some other water sources we're going to talk about. So we're going to have some graphs that really break this down and I think you'll get a, a lot out of it and it'll make a lot more sense because there's, there's just a number of classifications of water as opposed to the SRP on-project area. So we'll go ahead, I'm going to take a little detour first and talk about just where we stand right now on the Colorado River. So as you know, here in 2023, the Bureau of Reclamation declared that we're in a Tier 2A. So what that means is there's, there's a small cut to our Colorado River portfolio. It amounts to, if you look at all of the water served to our customers, it's maybe about 2 to 3%. I'm, I'm sorry, if it's all of our customers, it's really about 1%. Within the eastern and southern zone on the Colorado River areas, it's about 3%. So it's a small amount that we're cut here in 2A. What the Bureau has decided for 2024, since we had a pretty remarkable winter, is that they're going to actually relax that condition and we're going to go back up to a Tier 1. So that's essentially going to mean no water cuts for the City of Mesa. We're showing a graph right there that shows Lake Mead over the past year or so, and you can see there's a pretty astonishing uptrend. It's a small snapshot, so we don't want to get too carried away because what that takes us to is close to 1065 elevation in Lake Mead, that's really where it was two years ago. So we've gained a little ground, there's been a small rebound, but there's still a lot more work to do and everybody recognizes that, that's, that's the important thing. We're also still in Stage 1 of the Water Shortage Management Plan. As you remember, that's a four-stage plan and I know it gets confusing, you have tiers on Lake Mead and then you have stages. So when you hear tiers on Lake Mead, think of the, the operating playbook that the Bureau of Reclamation uses to manage Lake Powell, Lake Mead, the, the whole Colorado River system. When you see stages, that's here locally in Mesa, so think of that, that's our, our playbook, right? That's our playbook for how we want to manage demand and how we want to address the drought itself. City Manager declared Stage 1 in May of last year. Most cities here in the valley, they're also in Stage 1 and we think it's prudent to continue to stay in Stage 1. It's not, Stage 1 is not asking for any cuts from the public, it is asking for us internally as a city to look and see where we can cut and we're doing that, but it's more public outreach and education, so it makes sense to, to stay the course with that. Next, we want to jump into a couple, sure, Councilmember Freeman.
Are the tiers triggered by the elevation in the lakes like Mead and Powell? So that's what triggers your tiers?
Right, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, it's, right, so it's the, it's a lake level. So Tier 1 is triggered by elevation 1075 and that goes down to 1050. And the Bureau of Reclamation, what they do every August is they look at their most current 24-month study and they have a pretty good projection, it's dialed in within a foot or two of where we're going to land on January 1st. And January 1st, we're going to be in the upper 1060s, so we're going to be a little bit into that Tier 1.
Yeah, so I think for us to really analyze the elevation as a trigger for the tier cuts or, you know, continuation of the water that we have available to us. So I, I think the two need to be. So I, I think the two need to be said together so that, you know, you comprehend the two. Because some, because just the tier, you go, well, okay, well, what triggers that? So that's my comment. So thanks.
And it's also important to remember, as we're talking about tiers, so it goes back to the playbook that was really updated in 2007, the guideline, operating guidelines. So right now, all seven basin states, along with the Bureau of Reclamation, we're trying to come up with a new playbook, right? We're required to do that. So through 2026, we're operating off of those 2007 guidelines and the DCP, which was a few years ago, which did some, some fine tuning on, on the tiers. But it's going to be a requirement that starting in 2027, there's going to be a new playbook. So it could change the tiers. It could change how much the, the cuts are applied to the tiers. It's all an ongoing conversation, but that's just a few short years away. So that'll be a brand-new playbook that we have to look forward to. Okay.
Ms. Duff. While we're on the subject of the new playbook, this is the seven basin states and their allocations or their priorities are going to be reset or reallocated. And that, those decisions are made by the Bureau of Reclamation, right? Is that correct?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, ultimately, yes. But what the Bureau of Reclamation prefers to do is to have the states work amongst each other and work out those agreements. And it's not just the states, but it's the various sub-industries with agriculture and mining and residential. So you have competing interests. So it gets complicated. But the Bureau, at the end of the day, they'll step in and guide things and make decisions as they need to. But they prefer for the states to set the framework.
And there, I, I know that's been problematic and specifically, I don't want to throw California under the bus, but that's been the conversation is getting negotiation with California and that the federal government may have to make the decision, given the lack of cooperation there. Do we have any risk in this new distribution of having a lesser priority, a lesser access? I'm more junior than we are now? Is there that risk or it's so speculative, I guess we don't even know?
Right, Councilmember Duff, it's, it's still pretty early in the game. So we, we could speculate all day. It's kind of hard to, to know where we're going to land, truthfully. Okay, so that's a little bit about the status of where the Colorado River sits today and near term. Now we want to look at a few trends that, that are pretty interesting in terms of consumption. And this is good timing because we're going through the process of our rates discussions right now. So Jesse, if you want to go ahead to the next slide. We put together a graph that shows water consumption. So this goes back to 1990 through last year. And there's two curves we're showing you. On the bottom in the blue is residential. And on the top in the orange is non-residential. Now, these follow two different scales. The blue follows the vertical scale on the right. So you can see as of last year, this is gallons per, per account. So for single family, you could think it really is, is gallons per household, if you want to think of it that way. And we ended last year at about 260 to 270. Call it 265 gallons per account or household. And then if you look at the orange, it's up over, about just over 2,500 gallons per account. Because that's non-residential. That, that could be anything from light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing. It could be a large HOA with a master meter that has a lot of outdoor water use. So that's, that's non-residential. There's, there's three inflection points that I think are really interesting that I want to point out on, on both these curves. You can see in the, there was a plateau in the late 90s. And then you can see both those curves took a dive down. And the late 90s is when there were plumbing codes. And most notably, it was with, with toilets and the amount of gallons per flush. And it dropped significantly. And just that little change in the plumbing code, you could see a big drop per account, right? Per account or per household, whichever way you want to look at it. It lasted a few years. And then that, that trend, it went down and flattened out. And then you get to about 2000, mid 2005, 2006, there's another plateau. Well, that's when the EPA came out and launched the Water Sense. So Water Sense is putting more restrict water, water usage or water efficiencies on your dishwasher, on your, on your clothes washer appliances in the house, water-consuming appliances in the house. Then you can see there's another drop for both of those curves and those continue on. But you can see with residential, we're not done. We just keep, it's just a gradual decrease in terms of efficiency per account, how water is used in the household. But what you do see a flattening going back to around 2009 or so, all the way to 2022. The commercial, well, commercial's part of non-residential is actually pretty flat. Although in 2020, when a lot of the rhetoric with the drought and a lot of seriousness of the drought really intensified, you could see both those curves dive down again. So what I'm trying to point out is through either code changes, whether it's plumbing, something coming from the EPA in terms of efficiencies, or it's just where we stand in the drought, you can see there's, there's changes. But I guess if you stand way back and look at it, residential, that's pretty promising. That continues to go down. Now, the downside is residential here in the city, we're mostly built out. We're over 90% built out. So the remaining vacant parcels, which we'll talk a little bit about here in the next couple of slides, that's going to be non-residential. Any questions on that slide? I know I covered a lot.
I'm going to jump right in. I can be your best friend this morning, you know. So I, I think having many of the residential that's been added has been multifamily and smaller imprints. And so that's really helping on our consumption. And our future growth certainly will be in the densification, which will continue to keep the average per account down. So I'm going to cross over to the AMI. And I don't know if I'm out of bounds because I know that is not your department, the automated metering infrastructure. I know we have it in place. Is it online for residents to see, like when there's leakages?
It will be.
Okay.
Right, that's the intent. We're still working out the software and what that looks like. But residents will have an application where you'll be able to.
Okay.
You, not only will be able to just log in and look at your consumption every day, because right now you only know at the end of the month from one meter read, but you're going to have multiple reads per day that gives you a very distinct curve, how you're using water. But you can choose to look at it or not look at it as a resident or business. But there'll also be alerts or alarms. And we're going to talk about that next, actually next Thursday.
Okay.
That you can receive, that can say, hey, there's a problem. The software indicates there's something unusual and you might want to look at it. Now typically, we're going to see that first and we're going to reach out to you. And that's what we did in Phase 1.
Oh, I'm great. I'm really looking forward to that. I saw yesterday's newspaper, there was an article about Mayor Gallego and the toilet leak detection devices and stuff. And I think the AMI is so much more comprehensive. So we can, a common problem beyond toilets, but is in our landscaping, we have no idea what's going on underneath until it breaks to the point that we notice our.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that, Councilmember Duff. We're going to talk about that a little more next week. Some, some three cases we actually had in Phase 1 between 600 and 700 water meters. We actually had three cases where the software worked perfectly. It alerted us there was an issue, continuous water use. And all three of those cases was outside landscaping. The homeowner had no idea. Actually, one of the properties was a city property. We had no idea it was leaking. And we did some calculations on how much water that was saved by addressing those leaks proactively. And it was pretty incredible.
That's incredible. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the next slide. Okay, so this is, this is working off of the slide we just looked at. So with those same two residential and non-residential use, you can see the number of accounts that are residential, single-family are about 89%. So the vast majority of our water accounts, our customers, are these households. And then only about 11% are non-residential, which is, can be large HOAs. It can be commercial. There's 4,000 or 5,000 commercial, there's 4,000 or 5,000 HOAs. And then there's a bunch of smaller categories. In terms of gross numbers, this is about a, to give you a better idea, a percentage sometimes doesn't mean as much, but there's about 141,000 accounts that are single-family. And then there's about 16,000 that are everything else. But in terms of the water consumption, single-family might be 89% of our accounts, but they use less than half of the water. They use about 47% and non-residential uses slightly over, over half. So to give you a little bit of perspective on where the water is going, how it's used. So I'm going to turn this over to Jesse. He's going to start getting into the graphs that we talked about. And now we're going to switch gears. We took a step back, looked at some more global trends for the whole city. But now we're going to drill down, like I said, into the Colorado River. So those two, two zones to the east. And we're going to look at what the demand has looked like. And then we're going to look at what we project the demand to be as we work through our current master plan. And then we're going to start stacking up incrementally. We're going to bring in the different classifications of water in the portfolio so you can, you can see what that looks like. And I think you're going to appreciate that, so Jesse.
Chris, before you do that, I think the Vice Mayor has a question.
Sure, Vice Mayor.
On that graph on the previous slide, is that on the water consumption, is that going to continue to grow or be more like, as far as non-residential, be larger over the next several years? And assuming, right, with the large users that we might be getting, more companies coming in?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Heredia, that's good insight. That, that is going to happen because we are mostly built on a residential. You're going to see the water consumption. You're going to see it probably skew even, that orange is going to get even bigger. More of the water is going to go in that direction. So that's just something we have to think about as we're master planning and we're looking at industries, businesses that come in and just be, just us about, you know, how we look at that.
And then as far as how, I'm assuming it's more intense to deliver that water to these users than a residential? Or can you explain a little bit on the process that we take into as far as delivering that water to these mega-users that we have? Or the non-residential pieces in, in how that, how we are, are doing on that front?
Sure, Mayor, Vice Mayor Heredia. The process, it actually doesn't look any different. Once we treat the water and we put it into our finished water reservoir and we push it out into the system, you know, those water molecules don't really know whether they're going to a house or they're going to a data center. It's really, once we treat, pressurize the system, it really looks the same either way.
No problem. But as far as the infrastructure that we, I'm assuming it's larger infrastructure that we need to have to deliver that water into these, these companies, right?
Right, that, that could be. So anytime we have anyone that goes through economic development or approaches the city that expresses interest in developing any parcel, we require them to have their engineer put forth their, their projections on how much water they're going to use and wastewater, power, that kind of thing. So we know, we can examine our utilities and infrastructure. And then we, if we don't think that the infrastructure in place, say a transmission main, is big enough, then we have to, we have to give that feedback and say, listen, we don't have the infrastructure. But generally, because we master plan, we look a quarter century ahead. And we look at, and Jesse's going to talk about average and, and more, more than average expectations on water use. So we plan the infrastructure so that generally, that's not the problem. It's like the problem that one mega-water user wants to come into a parcel and it's, it's more stress on treatment, I would say, in terms of our portfolio, rather than the conveyance of getting them the water.
On that note, on this slide, how well are you working at this point with economic development and reviewing the plans for some of the industries that are coming in? Data centers are a huge user of water, if that's how they cool it. We have some new ones coming in that are air-cooled. But we have bottling plants, those types of things that are using a considerable amount of water. And particularly when they don't have a whole lot of jobs coming with that. So are we starting to work together between Water Resources, Energy Services, others in reviewing some of the applications to, to, to bring some of these facilities in and reduce the demands of water? And particularly to look at it from a perspective of how many jobs am I getting for the amount of water being used?
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Summers. I, I would say we've always had a pretty good relationship with economic development and work closely with them. But as of the last year or two, I would say we're really working closely with them and, and having frequent conversations about strategy and expectations. And we sit together, sometimes with some of these developers who have questions. We work together on the ordinance, the multiple large-meter ordinance that was passed a few years ago. We're looking to come back to you probably within the next year to just, from lessons learned, make that more stringent and more effective that we ensure that the businesses that come in here, if they are going to be large water users, they're going to have to go get, they're going to have to bring to us and deed over to the city a water that they, they procure. So we're going to cap how much water, any industry or any, any business, I don't want to just say industry, but any business that comes in, it's going to be well-defined, it already is well-defined on how much water they can get from our portfolio. Everything above that, they're going to have to bring in. So there's multiple mechanisms. And going back to your question, that relationship with economic development is, is pretty robust right now.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the, what I've coined paper water. Is somebody delivers a piece of paper, said we're going to deed this water over to you. When can we even access it? And secondly, does it even really exist on, on paper? And I, I hope that there are ways to track that, that, that water does exist and we can access that. But secondly, I know we're going to be discussing the water rates coming forward and, and how we tier those rates for high-water users. And hopefully we can provide some economic incentives through those rates to have those companies that use a lot of water invest in infrastructure and technologies that reduce their, their use.
Sure, Councilmember Summers, taking your, your last question first. Yes, and I think you'll see, and that's, that's part of why we wanted to make sure that we're very clear on how the water is being used and what classifications. It's all part of that discuss, that rates discussion. And it ties to the rates that we're proposing and it ties to the financial model and, and how we think is, is best to go about it with rates. And I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought up the other issue about where that water comes from with, when we ask an entity to go out and procure water, deed that over to us. So how, it's not service water typically. So we only have one case of that right now. Because fortunately, a couple of the larger industries that have come in have changed their technology, as you pointed out. So we, they actually use very, very little water for their footprint, which is good. The one case we have where this entity has had to go get water, it's actual wet water that was recharged into the ground by an entity other than Mesa. And that's tracked through the Bureau of Reclamation, not the Bureau of Reclamation, but Department of Water Resources. And they've purchased those credits and then we pump them. And we're, so it's not our water, it's not coming from the canal. We pump the water that someone recharged and they bought. And then once each of those acre feet are used, then that credit's extinguished. They have to go buy more. So that, that's more, hopefully that helps a little bit, how it works.
Yes.
So along those lines, I have another question, but along those lines. So once they bring water credits to the table and we exercise those and those are depleted, is there any risk, given they have invested in a business, that they may not be able to buy the water credits? Thus, they don't have water to operate their business?
Correct, Councilmember Duff. That's a business decision they're making. So it's a, it's a financial decision, a business decision. They, they have to feel comfortable entering into an agreement to acquire storage credits that there's enough there to run out a timeline that makes their investment worthwhile.
I see, okay. I wanted to bring up one model. I brought this up to Nana the other day. Is, I listened to a talk by the Chandler's Water Resources Manager or Director that they took the vacant land and looked at the zoning and created an average, if upon that zoning, I don't know how they do this, of what the water would be in the classification of that zoning. And they assigned it a tier. That would be Tier 1. If someone came, a business came in and said, I want to do this business and it's above that Tier 1, it would have to be maybe assigned Tier 2, which is means it's above that usage, but it's possibly within our, what we could provide. And that would have to be a decision that is made, you know, with the business coming in and possible rezoning or whatever requirements or approvals are needed. There would be an approval to move into that Tier 2. And then there would be also the assignment of Tier 3, which is, we can't provide the water. They would have to go to the market. And so that allowed them to do more master planning into the future as far as what their water capacity is. And as each project came in, approving it according to that master plan and the impacts that it would have. I'm just putting it out there just because I, I thought it was interesting and, and maybe. I'm just putting it out there just because I, I thought it was interesting and, and maybe something that we could implement in some model that worked for us. Thanks.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Duff, it's, I'm glad you said that because we are actually, when I mentioned we're coming back here within the next year to update and refine the multiple large meter ordinance, we're, we're headed in that direction. Right now, it's, so when we first established it, it really set gross limits on any one user. It didn't really matter the size of the property. It was, it's 500,000 gallons per day or 550 acre feet per year, right? That's the threshold. If you're using more than that, you're a multiple large meter customer. And then you, then we're going to have the conversation about how you have to go procure water. What we think is a smarter way to do it is to tie it more to master planning and look at land use or zoning rather than just have some gross number so that as, so then we can evaluate it in a sense of how do we master plan it rather than just some number that is, is up here. So we are headed in that direction. And the updates we're going to do to the ordinance are going to reflect just what you said. Okay?
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to Jesse and we're going to start getting into graphs and talk more about portfolio on the Colorado River.
Okay. So, so the graphic we see on the right here, that's showing the southern area, which is the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant Service Area. Each blue dot, it just represents a meter. And so we just thought it was a cool graphic to kind of show the growth in Southeast Mesa. And you can see when the Signal Butte Plant came online in about 2018, about half of those parcels were occupied with a meter and there was still about half to go. So obviously as it grows out, we'll have to expand the Signal Butte Plant to serve that. Moving forward, we're going to show you supply versus demand. So we're first going to start with demand. And as Chris said, we're going to kind of layer on the supply because there's a lot of different supplies. So first, we're going to show you existing demand from 1983 to present. And then from present, we're going to show our master planning numbers out into the future. So we're going to show you three different scenarios to kind of bracket what we think future growth could be. So there's a no growth scenario where it basically just stays flat. There's an average growth. So we look at the vacant parcels that are, are yet to develop. And we, we look at the, the general plan and the zoning for those areas and we apply the, for the average growth, we're using the 50th percentile customer and applying that, that water demand to these future customers and then projecting that out. And then in our moderate growth, we use the 75th percentile. So it's a much higher than, than average usage. So here is the graph. So the, the CAP Canal was completed into Mesa and the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant came online in 1985. Before that, any customers that were in East Mesa were just off of groundwater. So you can see we have quite a lot of growth. So the city's been growing this whole time. But in the, the graph that we showed with Chris earlier, the use per customer was increasing until those plumbing code changes in the late 90s. And what that did to overall growth in water demand is it kind of flattened it out. And then in 2008, there was a recession that really impacted the real estate market in Southeast Mesa where most of this growth is. So it kind of came down. But since about 2012, 2013, we've started to see this kind of uptick in growth and in increased water demand. So the red line, that's the no growth scenario. It's basically just a flat line. The yellow would be if our future customers kind of followed the trend of an average customer and they, so that's that yellow line you kind of see. And then the orange line would be if they followed the trend of a, a higher than normal customer. Okay. So next, we're going to layer in on top of the, the demand, we're going to layer in the supply. So first, we're just going to show Colorado River only. So we're not going to show groundwater or any other. We're just going to show the surface water from the Colorado River. And so starting with this graph, we, we, we layer them in order of priority. So at the bottom are the highest priority rights and then you kind of work your way up. So at the bottom in green, you'll see that's the Gila River Indian Community Exchange Water. The, the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant came online in 2007, late 2007. It started treating water and we started to deliver water to the Gila River Indian Community. We deliver them the water in one year, in one calendar year. And then in the following calendar year, they pay us back with CAP water. So you can see that green bar start to grow. And then in 2027, that's when we project that we will start to receive the beneficial reuse from the Central Mesa Reuse Project. So that pipeline started construction this summer and it's anticipated to be done towards the end of 2025. So for the full calendar year 2026, we would send them water from the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant. And then in calendar year 27, they would pay us back. So that would, that bumps up the water rights. The peach color is contracts that the city purchased in the, in the early 90s from various Indian communities. And then the blue is what they call the municipal and industrial water rights that, that we receive from CAP. So next, we're going to show, oh, sorry, I should have mentioned, as you see, there are multiple spots here where the demand exceeds the supply of the surface water. So in the early 2000s, you see the, the demand actually exceeded the supply of the surface water. And then if, if our projections are correct, in the later years towards build out, you would start to see demand exceeding supply. So there are other water rights that can be used off project that could be used to supplement that. So in, in 1996, they raised the level of Roosevelt Dam. And as part of that, the City of Mesa participated in some of that cost to raise that. And as part of that, so when, when Roosevelt Lake fills up like it did this last winter, that kind of flood space, Mesa gets a portion of that. Obviously, it doesn't fill up every year. We don't always have wet winters like we did. So Mesa purchased a 43,000 acre feet of that. But since it doesn't fill up every year in our assured water supply, they kind of looked at the hydrology. And we plan on an average of 12,500 acre feet a year. So that water can be used off project, even though it comes from the SRP area. And then in terms of groundwater, we have about 12,000 acre feet of groundwater that's naturally recharged, that's recognized in our assured water supply that we can pump out sustainably. And two thirds of that we use off project. So in the graph, we show, so above the blue, you see the yellow and then reddish color. We really like our colors here in water. So, so the, the orange, the yellowish color would be the, the groundwater surface area, right? And then the reddish color would be that NCS water. So, so with those sustainable groundwater and NCS water, you can see that there's no problem. We, supply could be demand today and even projected into an even aggressive water demand. So ideally, the presentation would just end right now and we'd say, it's all good, nothing more to talk about. But unfortunately, there's a drought. So we were asked to look at some kind of worst case scenarios. And so as we were talking with our master planning engineers and looking at this, we thought, well, what's a, what's a cut that would really stress our portfolio? So as Chris talked about, we're in a tier two A right now, going back to a tier one. If we were to go to a tier three, the cut would only be about 20% of our M and I. So we thought, well, we modeled that. There was still some, some space there. So we thought, well, what's a cut that would really stress the system? So we, we wanted to model a 50% cut to M and I. We're not saying that's going to happen. We hope that never happens, but we just wanted to see kind of what a worst case scenario would look like. So in a cut to our M and I, the Arizona Water Banking Authority has been recharging kind of excess water from the Colorado River in the ground in, in multiple areas. And in a cut, they would firm all the users that were participating in this program. So for Mesa, that would equate to about 8,500 acre feet for about a 10-year timeframe. So we show the graph here. And so in our, in our scenario, we're modeling the 50% cut occurring in the year 2026. And so you see that, you see the blue, that's that M and I would cut in half. And then the gray would be that Arizona Banking Water Authority. So you can see, even with the 50% cut for 10 years, we would still be meeting demand with no, no water shortage plans or no reduction of demand. We could still develop. But then if, if the cut were to persist for, for beyond a decade and growth were to still continue, we would kind of see that gap appear again between supply and demand. So we look at, there are kind of future water supplies that are out there that we're actively looking into. So there's a couple of projects we're going to talk about. SRP is in kind of the planning stages for raising Bartlett Dam. So the picture you see on the right, that's a picture of Bartlett Dam. Similar to what was done at Roosevelt, they would raise the level of it. And Mesa is currently at the table in discussions with SRP on potentially participating in some of that cost and then being able to get water from that that could be used. And so in this scenario, we're just making an assumption that we could get up to 5,000 acre feet a year from that. Obviously, there's still a lot more planning and, and that project is at least 10 years away, right?
Yes.
So, and then the second project, which is also kind of in the conceptual planning phases, is 91st Avenue. So at 91st Avenue, they take, they take the reclaimed water and they send a majority of it to the Palaberty Nuclear Power Plant where it's used for cooling and then it evaporates. And then they sell some of it to the Buckeye Irrigation District. And then they also discharge into the Trace Rios Wetlands. There's extra water left over after they meet those commitments. And so City of Phoenix has been exploring what to do with this additional water. So one of the ideas is to install an advanced treatment at 91st Avenue and take that additional water, treat it to drinking water standards. And then City of Phoenix would pump that water into their water distribution system. Part of that extra water is Mesa's water that's currently going to 91st Avenue. So Mesa could participate in the cost of this project. And Phoenix would treat our water, put it into their water system. And then at Val Vista, they would give us their water kind of in exchange. So it would kind of be an exchange. Again, this is in the planning phases. It's probably also a 10-year away kind of thing. But in this model, we looked at, well, what would that look at in 10 years if we were able to get that water? And then finally, Mesa has been recharging water at Grusp, the Granite Refund and Ground Storage Project since the early 2000s. So we take water from our Northwest Plant that's located there at the, the 101 and 202 and we pump it all the way up to Grusp where it's been recharging for the last 20 years. We have banked 540,000 acre feet in long-term storage credits. Like Chris said, with the long-term storage credit, once you use that credit, it's extinguished and it goes away. So we've been putting money in the water bank and then we can pull it out. So looking at that, a sustainable pulling it out would be 500, 5,400 acre feet. So if you divide it by 100 years. So then looking at that graph, you could see with these additional water supplies, even with kind of the more aggressive growth, we could meet supply and demand.
Mr. Heredia.
Is there, isn't there another project on the, what is it called? The Verde, the, that?
I know where you're going.
Yeah, I can't remember what it's called. I know we're in the beginning phases and we've, we've put in some dollars with other cities to study and, and figure out, how do we capture that, that water down? As you look out 20 years almost, is that much farther that we anticipate potentially if, if we do do that work?
Sure. Vice, Vice Mayor Heredia. So that is the Bartlett.
Is that the Bartlett?
It's on the Verde. And we had a meeting with SRP two week, two, three weeks ago. And we talked about that project. And they're looking at probably about 2032. There's a lot of work to go through, environmental studies and then, this, the whole process would take a while.
Sure.
So 2032, 2030 would be about, is the targeted timeline, City of Phoenix. I know Mayor Gallegos is really pushing for advanced purification at 91st Avenue and targeting 2030. I think we're showing it as still 2032 in our graph here. So those are, I think it speaks to just this whole, this whole discussion, which is it's about long-range planning.
Sure.
So if you went back 20 years from now, you can see our portfolio was a lot less, but we have a lot more today because it's continual planning into the future. So today's planning is for what we want to have in 12 or 20 years or 30 years from now. So it's a continual progression of learning how to, and taking steps to augment our water portfolio. But I should point out, long-term storage credits, which we're showing just a small sliver in those last few years, I think that's in the orange color. That is our, our bank and it's over half a million acre foot of long-term storage credits. So that's something we, we want to use more as a last resort. So that's why you see just a small sliver there. But then there, the other side of this is also, that's for very aggressive growth for the remaining vacant parcels in the city? That has, that's not showing any proactive work on our part for demand. So we have our water shortage management plan. There's tools, there's incentives that we give, there's just constant public outreach and education to inform consumers. And you can see from that, that red line that goes flat across the screen for demand, that's a best fit curve over the last 20 years. You can see the last 20 years, just over different, because of different cases, demand has stayed pretty, pretty tempered. So we have a lot of tools, a lot of levers that we can pull to keep demand in check and not let it run up at a steep slope.
Yeah. And that's my question. You project like 40% increase in demand over the next 40, 20 years, when the last 20 years, it's been kind of flat. Do we not anticipate just the technologies of being, you know, improving to keep that flat? I know we, we want to be conservative in our, on ensuring that we have projections that show the demands, but do, do you anticipate or optimist, optimism on just demand maybe increasing not as a, at a 40% rate over the next 20 years?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor Heredia. I do, I'm optimistic about it. I mean, it always proves out to be that way. If you looked at a master plan we did 10 years ago, it would show that same crazy slope going up because we, you have to be conservative.
Sure.
You don't want to undershoot it. And, but look what's happened over 10 and even 20 years. The public, I think, takes this seriously. And you can even see some, from some of the big water users recently, where they, they were coming in and they were going to use a lot of water. Their engineers had produced or predicted this facility that was going to use a lot of water. And they recognize that they don't want to be part of the problem, right? So they want to cooperate and they've changed their technology completely. And they went from a very intensive water use to very little water use. So it's not just us telling the public or putting, putting things in place to try to control this demand curve. I think it's a two-way street where, that's why I'm optimistic, because I think the public also recognizes that they have to do their part.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's go Ms. Spilsberry and then Ms. Goforth.
I was just going to piggyback on that, that this does not include, you know, in, increase in changes in technology like the air cooling and things like that, correct? Would you mention again, the, the long-term storage credits are where? What, what is that called? Groundwater?
So the, the long, they're actually, Councilmember Goforth, in numerous places. So the, actually, the, the majority of the long-term storage credits were, were CAP water through the CAP Canal that Mesa took and then ran through the RWCD Canal System and then different places recharged along that. But then as of late, maybe the last 15 years or so, it's Grusp, which is sits right along the Salt River, Granite Refund and Ground Storage Project. And that's where, over the last several years or more than that, we're, we've been recharging more than 5,000 acre foot a year of recycled water. So it's recycled water that goes into that storage basin. And then over the years between those different mechanisms, we've built up very significant number of long-term storage credits. So put that in perspective, last year in 2022, the total demand in Mesa was under 100,000 acre foot. And we have, so we have five and a half times that. And we don't want to use any of it, truthfully. I don't want to use any of it. But if we have to, we're going to manage it the best we can, but if we have to use a little bit, we would in that case where you see this deep curve. But I think to what we're talking about, I don't, I'm not optimistic we can control that curve in a better way.
Right.
Yeah. For sure. And I assume the master planning, you, you look at, as Councilmember Duff mentioned, Chandler, you look at those zoning districts and that's how you determine.
Sure. Councilmember Go, that's exactly how we did it. So when we say 50, the average, it's, it's a comprehensive exercise of collecting all that actual water use by all those zoning types. And then that actual water use by all those zoning types and then drawing up those curves and figuring out what's the average, what's 75th percentile and so on.
Thank you.
I, I'm looking at this slide and I'm just wondering, so if this is showing like a potential 50% cut to the MNI priority water, all of our other areas are kind of stable, so like, is there concerns that in the future, something would happen to our Indian community contracts or GRIK water, you know, any of these other NCS water, the groundwater service, you know, like, those all look really stable. So, I was wondering, like, what would hap, what would happen if something happened to one of those?
Right.
And can you even foresee, you know, that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury. So, if we got in, so we, we didn't want to show, because there's an infinite, there's an infinite number of scenarios when you look at everything. 50% is pretty aggressive. So, if you get into really aggressive cuts on the Colorado River, that would start to squeeze into the Gila River Indian Community Exchange, maybe some of the other tribal leases, it would start to squeeze them down a little bit. But another thing you have to consider is, we're showing that severe 50% cut, but we're just running that out in perpetuity. That, that wouldn't be the case. It probably would be a year, maybe it's three years. But, we're trying to really stress, it's like a stress test, right? We're trying to really do an aggressive stress test on our system. So, let's say there's a 75% cut that also affects those other areas. Again, that would probably be, for a cut that significant, it would be something that would be more short-lived. So, the, those fires would shrink, but they wouldn't go out forever. They'd probably be one year, two years, three years.
We hope, yeah. So, so you just picked that area because that was, that's the biggest effect and, but you could do this with any of the scenarios essentially.
Sure. We, well, another reason we picked the 50% cut is if you went back six, seven months before, really before the winter snow accumulation started up in the basin and there was really a good idea of what kind of winter we had, and the, and the states were not really agreeing on what kind of actions should be taken. At that point, there was talk that, you know, we could be looking at a severe cut, say a 50% cut on the MNI. So, as a, as a team within Water Resources, we looked, we did all of the modeling for the whole system, pockets of the system to just run operational scenarios of what that looks like. And even at 50%, it's, it's not that hard for us to bridge through. We've been very fortunate. I want to thank the people that were here a quarter century ago, right, with that, that had the foresight to really have robust planning and to build up the water portfolio because it's left us in a good shape and we want to do the same for the people sitting here 25 years from now. We want to leave them in good shape and that's why we're doing the planning we're doing now.
Okay. And then, I don't even know why I try to talk about water sometimes, but the green, the GRIK water, that jump in 2027, that's the central reuse pipeline?
Correct.
So, that's what we can attribute to that increase right there.
We're basically doubling our, our exchange with the Gila River Indian Community from 8,000 or 9,000 acre foot to double that.
Okay. That's really good for me to see, so that when I talk to people to, just to see it in that sense of where it fits into our whole water portfolio. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
I'm going to let him finish. I've got several.
Oh, great. Keep going, guys.
Go ahead, Jesse.
Well, we are finished. Councilmember Freeman, that's it. I really, in summary, I won't give a long conclusion. It's just about, I think I've already really done the conclusion. It's about planning, being proactive, master planning is critical to look at zoning, it's coming back to you in the future with better, more effective ordinances that, that help assist us in this way. I would say that's, that's, if I had to wrap it up, I'd do it that way, so with your question.
Well, it's probably more an observation because I'm on AMO and so, being part of that process of the 10 municipalities, we are well-positioned in our water portfolio. I mean, we're, we're strong. In fact, the project will admit that Mesa has the best water portfolio. Some of the questions I have, even on Grusp, we've had the conversation about accessing that water infrastructure-wise. And I know you're planning on building some wells in the area. The project already has wells in the area and they intend to use that. So, I'm sure that in the future, there can be water exchanges and on paper to utilize, even in a difficult situation, some of that water into our infrastructure to deliver water to our, our municipality. Is that reasonable?
Sure. You're right. Councilmember Freeman, we really take the approach of putting everything on the table. So, we look at possibilities of sharing agreements. We are doing a hydrologic study right now in North Mesa to look at, there's a couple viable sites where we think it would be advantageous to put a well. The, the beauty of putting a well up in those locations are, those are high producers, 5 MGD even at the top end. But we do, we are permitted by the state to recover, store groundwater with any of our 35 wells. And if it, if it got into a situation that we needed to recover long-term storage credits, it would probably be down in Southeast Mesa where we're actually expanding our well field today. And that's where we would prob, most likely recover long-term storage credits. That's where we would need them, most likely. But we're going to have the capability to recover anywhere.
Yeah. Obviously, we can't move the on-project water to off-project water, you know, concerns. But, you know, one thing you, you may have admitted, you know, the city is participating in the forest thinning project with the SRP. And so, that will help maybe get a, a little bit of additional acre feet through the Verde River watershed. And then, that's why it's so important to raise Bartlett Dam. And when I met with Senator Sinema and we discussed about the red tape necessary to start dams, the whole consensus was, we need to shorten that timeline and get this dam built.
Sorry, could you say that?
Want me to repeat it?
He swore and so it just turned out.
But, you know, it was, the water releases this past December through May, you know, all that water went down the river, which it's supposed to be. But then, a certain part of that did recharge, some of the water basins along, the aquifers along the Salt River and then the Gila as well, all the way to the Colorado River. So, it works perfectly, but we need to conserve that water and have access. So, the city needs to do participate in the Bartlett Dam raising of that for our future. And like you said earlier, you know, by doing that, it will protect us from 20, 30, 40 years from now. That's just some of my comments. So, I appreciate the lead on that and, you know, planning on our, our infrastructure needs, you know, what we need to bond to do that, to help prepare the future of our city. So, with that, thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments, Councilman?
I, I recall a few months ago, looking at Mr. Brady saying, hey, in, in this context of all of this attention that we're getting about water supply due to the shrinking Colorado River, can't we, can't you just, you know, get one of your smart engineers to do a supply and a demand graph and hand it to us so we can look and say, oh, look, we're, either we're okay or, oh my gosh, we're in big trouble? And so, little did I know that when you hand that assignment to engineers, what you get is a supply that is made of eight colors and a demand line that is, you know, goes three different directions.
We can't help it.
Yeah. But, but that's wonderful, isn't it? I mean, this is the, the type of diligent planning that, that our community is, needs. And so, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this and, and I think we, I, I, I think the, the chart that you've prepared is very, very conservative. And I think we need to underline that with people and say, this is in many ways a worst-case scenario. And, and that's at how we should plan. But I, I recall, but here's my, one of my concerns. It, it ends at 2040 and we're talking about, well, you know, 25 years from now, what, well, I want to know what happens at build-out because 25 years ago, I was sitting in that chair as the Vice Mayor when we were making these plans to have water. And I'm glad that we made plans, you know, for 25 years from now, but people are going to be here after 2040. What, can the chart take us to build-out so that we can say in perpetuity? We, we, we feel like we have the portfolio that's going to get us where we need to go?
So, Mayor Giles, the, so the 2040 is arbitrary in a sense. What we did is we looked at every vacant parcel left in the city and then, based on its land use and historical water use, then we made those calculations. So, that, that gross number, whatever that number is at the, at 2040, whether you slide it up to 2036 or push it out to 2047, that number is still the ultimate build-out water consumption.
Okay. So, so 2040 wasn't arbitrary. 2040 is where you think we, we peak as, as far as our water demands go?
We, we do. We feel like that is a, is a good representation of where the city could be built out, but like, like I said, what's more important is the calculations and the process to get that gross number. Whether it happens a few years earlier or later, it's going to still end up at that same number.
That's great. So, so this is a, this should give us all some comfort and we should sleep at night, you know, knowing that our children and grandchildren are going to be able to flush the toilet, you know, 26 years from now. And, but I, I think it still is a cautionary tale that we all ought to look at this and be somewhat uncomfortable and realize that there is a compelling argument that we all need to be making for water conservation. Our area is the only area that I'm aware of in the country where before you can build anything, you have to prove you have 100-year guaranteed water supply. That, that makes us unique in the United States. So, that's part of what we, the message we need to share with people who are maybe nervous about relocating businesses and people and investments to Mesa, Arizona, that this is one of the safest places you can come with regard to water supply. But at the same time, I think we all, I, I know just personally, a, a year ago, I, I eliminated the grass turf from my front yard. A few months after that, I eliminated the grass turf from my backyard. A couple of weeks ago, I eliminated the grass turf from my office building because I, I think we all just need to, and I'm not, I'm just an example of, you know, thousands. I think we all need to catch on to the fact that going forward, for the, for that line to continue to not skyrocket, we need to adopt our, the way that we consume water.
And Mayor, those, so what you just said is exactly why, you know, we predict conservatively, but you see the actual curve tends to be flatter because people make, we calculate based on people not making those decisions to be conservative, but when people engage and, and do make decisions that are efficient like that, then you do see the demand curve flatten out in reality.
So, great. I, I think again, the, this is, this is, this gives me some comfort, but I think we need to not take our foot off the gas when it comes to increasing the emphasis on water conservation. Ms. Goforth, did you have a?
I just had one more question and I, just to begin, just to say, I, I appreciate your aggressive planning and our diverse portfolio. And I think we ought to, I know we touched on it a little bit, but continue because those didn't take into account, maybe the continu, continuing to discuss ways that we get creative in our zoning and, and, and water use and, and where those intersect and how, how they play out. Again, Councilmember Duff's example of one of our neighboring cities and, and doing some things like that so that they're predictable and understandable for, for potential builds and development in the city and, and address those water conservation needs. So, I would, I would just encourage just to consider those types of discussions. Thanks.
Thank you. Job well done, gentlemen. I think we'll be sharing your graph. I think I would encourage all, all to get a, a copy of these, this and turn it into a PowerPoint because we, certainly this is, people in our community need to, to get this message.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three on our agenda for this meeting is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Duff?
Yeah. I'm glad I could fill in for Julie. She's been as good as. So, and this week, I attended a couple of community meetings with Fiesta PD. We did a country club corridor business meeting, adventure on country club and talking about the issues with the businesses and how we can work better together to address problems in that area. And I appreciate all the work of PD and the community. It has improved remarkably over the last years. Also, we did a community meeting with four residents, especially our Latino, our Hispanic residents at El Super yesterday. Last night, there was a meet and greet for five candidates for a new Arts and Culture Director. And there was also a meet and greet last night for the new Benedictine President. And I saw the mayor there, I saw Julie there, so some new directors coming our way, our new presidents. I also attended, I'm on the National League of Cities Energy, Environment and Natural Resources Board and we did a review of our federal resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other, anything else you'd like to share? Ms. Spilsbury?
Well, I just feel like I have to thank the police since Jen did for hers. So, we did our Pacers with police yesterday. Great turnout. I just so appreciate the police department doing these events in our communities. I think people really enjoy and have a lot of questions and it's good to rub shoulders with the police officers and so I want to thank them for that. That was at Midwestern Meets, which is now owned by a former Mesa Police Officer. So, go stop, it's main between Valvista and Greenfield, Midwestern Meets.
Great. Ms. Goforth?
I, I just wanted to comment, I know probably most of you know, we had that storm the other night and that we had some significant damage at Falcon Field, but just wanted to thank the city for their quick response to that. They've been working on it for the last day. And we had, I think, what is it, 23 planes were damaged and 85 hang, city-owned hangars were damaged. And so, the, the Weather Service did confirm there was a microburst in that area. So, anyway, thank you to city departments and, and hopefully tenants are getting, getting cleaned up and, and, and are back, getting to get back into their, their hangars and airplanes and things like that. So, anyway.
Any of the historic planes damaged?
Yeah. Both World War II hangars were, had damage. One structurally, so it's a little bit more serious. And then, with the other one, the roof, yeah, a little bit. A lot of the doors were damaged and so they damaged the planes that were sitting right adjacent to the doors. So, yeah, a lot of.
That would be terrible if those historic hangars couldn't, hopefully they can be repaired.
Right. Yeah.
Counsel, any other comments?
I want to take just a moment to thank my Chief of Staff, Melissa Rondazzo. To this is her last week of work with the City of Mesa. She has got an exciting new job as the Communications Director for Coconino County. I think Melissa's always kind of been a lumberjack at heart, so we're, we're happy that she gets to get back up in the pines. But I think a lot of you, she, she, that's a really tough job and she's done a wonderful job at it throughout my tenure as the mayor, so I just want to say thank you to her. She's been in the mayor's office longer than I have, so I've done my best to, to protect her from all the criticism, you know, that, that comes to the mayor's office, but sometimes you get blamed for things that you're not responsible for. But going forward, I'm not going to protect her from that criticism anymore. So, anything that you don't like about the mayor's job, that's the person who's responsible. And, and for the, for the next year and a half, Melissa, your name is going to be spoken a lot about why things aren't any better than they are. But, no, it, that, that the opposite is true. The, the good things that have happened tied to the mayor's office for the last few years, last nine years have been, had her fingerprints on them and I just want to say thank you, Melissa. And you will be greatly missed. Counsel, if anything else to share? Mr. Butler, what does our future meeting schedule look like?
Mr. Mayor, first, I, I just wanted to piggyback real quick on what Councilmember Goforth said. We really appreciated all the help and support throughout the city. I look out into the audience right now and so many city departments yesterday stepped up first thing overnight after the storm had passed at Falcon Field and, and the surrounding area, from public safety to parks to obviously the Falcon Field crew. Engineering pulled crews off of our City Hall project and relocated them over to Falcon Field because of the immediacy and the safety issues that were addressed. It's just, a solid waste had roll-offs out in a matter of hours. I mean, it was amazing to kind of see the entire city apparatus mobilize and respond so, so quickly to that. So, really appreciate our, our departments and the, and the hard work that, that they did yesterday and will be continuing for weeks, at least at Falcon, for some of the cleanup and remediation of that. So, kudos to them. Vice Mayor Heredia, did you want to make the announcement about your event, or the event that's happening here over the weekend?
Perfect, yeah. At the Mesa Arts Center, we have kind of an initial kickoff for Hispanic Heritage Month. We have what's called a Grito, which is, celebrates the Mexican independence. So, this is the first time that we're bringing the console to do this type of event for the public in, into the East Valley. And so, hopefully, we can mirror in the future years, even larger events like that here for the future.
for Hispanic Heritage Month in Mesa. So, yeah, thank you for reminding me, so.
Right. And there, sorry, and that's from 6 to 8. We'll have music, food trucks and dancing and a short program where the Mexican consulate does kind of the, the Grito is kind of the yell of the independence. I have no, I cannot do the Grito, but I'll leave it to the, the consul, consulate there. But yeah, it's a, it's a fun kind of event. Just say, if you have an experience, come down from 6 to 8. At 7, we'll do a small program in having the consul, consulate do the Grito that night, so.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Mayor and Counsel, we'll see you back here on Monday at 5:15 for study session, followed by another council meeting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.